President of the Pasadena Area Community College Board of Trustees, Ms. Thompson, will you read the roll?
Ms. Wa. I'm sorry, Ms. Wa.
Here.
Dr. Salvage.
Here.
Dr. Fellow. Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hilsman.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Osterling.
Here.
Ms. Mahn.
Here. Okay, Trustee Osterling, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome, everyone. Do we have any introductions and recognitions?
We have with us today the Superintendent of the El Monte High School Union, accompanied by one of the board members who is also a faculty member at Pasadena City College.
Did you want to say a few words, or? Okay, well, we are now at public comment for non-agenda items. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, we have one very important person who has turned this in, and that would be Dr. Perez.
Do I just do this here? Okay, so, we have three minutes to speak, and when the light turns yellow, you have one minute to speak.
The light is...
Right next to Estella.
Okay, great.
And Trustee Martin will serve as our clerk for tonight.
Okay.
I need 30 seconds extra.
Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, Cabinet Staff, and members of the audience. My name is Dr. Irela Perez, Superintendent of El Monte Union High School Districts, and I'm here with my Board President, Ms. Estella Torres de Segres.
Thank you very much.
Yes. We are here, and I have about eight items that I want to just briefly go over it, but I want to say congratulations to you for the decision that you made on your president's superintendent. From our part with the work that we've been doing with your superintendent, he's been very pleasant, satisfactory, positive. He is a great ambassador of the university and a great communicator and collaborator. We appreciate you very much, and that is the reason why we're here. We brought some parents, we sent some parents with their students to the college, and they honestly got the red carpet treatment. It would be very, very difficult for these families to expand their choices to anywhere else, pretty much, because of the quality of human being that your superintendent, Board President, shared with our families. They were very impressed, not only with your superintendent, but with Dr. Bell as well. So, thank you, and the rest of the staff, and that includes everyone who was part of that filter. So, please, Superintendent, please extend our gratification. So, really briefly, I just also want to say that we are here to thank the noticeable increase in articulation with PCC. Dr. Burton has been to our district several times. Dr. Bell, as dean from various departments, articulating with our educational service office on program grants and even field trips for potential students and parents. We want to say thank you to the Amtel Grant, offering dual credit for students in our projects, Lead the Way Program at South Del Monte High School. We're also in the beginning stages of articulation with Yoshiko Yamato, professor of mathematics with the math team in our district, and the strong partnership with PCC Rosemead Campus Center. A large number of our students attend that campus, and our former students of our district making this an overall win-win situation for everyone. So, thank you.
The last part that I want to say, of course, I told him, what do you think? I work in this place, and this is the best of the best, and I'm very happy. I was one of the persons who came with the parents and the students, and absolutely, you were wonderful. All your people were wonderful, and now, our students, most of the students, they want to come to PCC. I don't know how you are going to do with all those students here, but El Monte Union High School District, our five high schools are very, very happy with the program. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Martin. It's been a pleasure to work with you and to have our students to get the best education. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to give that report and taking your time, and it's wonderful to have such a great partner in El Monte. And, Trustee Martin, since this is your area, did you want to say anything?
Well, just similar, it's, we hope a lot of those students are going to end up at PCC Rosemead, and it's a wonderful relationship, and you've heard how well, how successful it is, and we just appreciate the collaboration there and look forward to working even closer with particularly Rosemead High School and that campus, but all the campuses, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we're going to have a little procedural change. What I asked is Vice President Salvage to monitor for any of the trustees who want to speak to any of the agenda items. Did you have another question?
What's the question? Not, there's not public non-agenda. There is some for on-agenda, item E.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? On February 3rd?
I move...
Trustee Brown?
Second.
Trustee Hilsman, second. Any discussion, any corrections? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have approval of consent items. Are there any items that the trustees wish to pull?
And we do have public comment on 73P.
Okay. Would you please call the speaker?
Okay. First will be Daniel Wire, followed by Joseph Gregory.
So, as a reminder, you'll have three minutes to speak. The clerk will set the timer. When the timer turns to yellow, you'll have approximately two more minutes, and he will signal you.
Good evening, President, Board of Trustees, and everybody else in attendance. Thank you for everybody here. The consent item I'm here today is the consent item of transferring assignments and divisions of the newly-placed football coach, Tom Marr, and the removal of old head coach, Tom Carmeyer. With this, with this move of assignment and change, when I looked into HR, there is a removal, a removal of his, Tom Carmeyer's assignment and putting Tom Marr, I'm sorry, Tom Carmeyer's assignment and moving Tom Marr into the role. And this is a, supposed to be a change of assignment, but it is a change of division because currently, I'm sorry, Tom Marr is a kinesiology instructor and not a coach, and this move of division is moving Tom Marr from kinesiology instructor into athletics, which is currently two separate divisions, and they're saying that it is currently one, that they're joining it in the future, but as of right now, it is too separate. So, with this, I feel like it is a unfair and very unprofessional moving because they opened the job, they flew the job on the Pasadena website for a new head coach and allowed applicants to apply for this position, and then, after applying Tom Marr, they closed the application, and I feel like this is very unprofessional and unfair to every other applicant that applied for this job. With that being said, I have a petition with over 129 signatures by student athletes, and student athletes only. The reason I choose to get student athletes is because this in our athletic division shows that it is unfair and that people can take what seems to be sometimes a backdoor to get a position instead of some coaches have to go through a three-interview-step process to get the job. With this, it can happen to any sport. It happened to football, and after speaking to any other athlete, if it happened to their sport, they would be in turn horrified of it as well. We, as athletes, we are student athletes, we go to school full-time, and we play our sport full-time. Some of us even work part-time to pay for ourselves. Our sport is our way of getting a better education. We use it as momentum, we use it as fuel for ourselves to better ourselves and our lives. And by changing a head coach, this is the third change within the last two years. Not only are we destroying our football program, but we are also destroying our kids because it takes a lot of times for, sometimes for us, to get close and build a relationship with the coach, and we had a relationship, and we're willing to fight for our coach. With a 2-8 season, although it is very, a very poor record, with that being said, I have here gentlemen, as well as people throughout the school, that are willing to say that this man for the job, Tom Carmeyer, is ready for the job. But if he's not elected back into his position, I would love it if the board could open the application process again and review every applicant for the job instead of letting a internal candidate just get it after a secret five-person panel meeting. Thank you. Can I have a, I also have a petition. Am I able to turn it in to you directly, President?
Hand it to the, to Ms. Thompson, and she'll make sure that the board gets it. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Joseph Gregory?
How are y'all doing tonight? Pretty much, we're all here, we're on the football team. There's a lot more of us that couldn't make it tonight, but we're here because we truly care about our coach, Tom Carmeyer, and it's not just him, but the phenomenal job he has done in such a short time. I know the record was only 2-8, but if you ask any of the football players, we really felt the change with the environment and with the program, and just being more successful and having more opportunities as student athletes. And this is not a matter of just favoritism on one head coach or another. We're going to respect whoever comes in here, but being a student athlete, being at PCC for, for over, for around two years and being a person that's going to have to play this next football season, and being at such a school prestigious as Pasadena City College who prides themselves on, on students, you know, just all about the student, take care of the student, get the student out of here, we just feel like the student athlete was looked at last in this situation. Just, we were thought of last. This is our third head coach in two years, so there's not much structure there, there's not much stability. We just want to be, we just want to be taken care of, we just want to have the best opportunity, have the best structure, the best organization to, to be able to get our grades right, our football right, and get out of here to, to further our education. So, this is not a matter of favoritism towards anybody, but we just see the, the true change in environment, the true change in the locker room with Tom Carmeyer, and that's why we're so persistent and adamant that we want him to stay. This is no disrespect to the new coach, Tom Carmeyer. I'm sure he's a great individual, but we just want a fair chance for our coach because we feel like he's not given a fair chance, and we feel like the student athlete has been looked at last in this situation. So, that's why we're all here.
No, that was the last one.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I know you've met with Dr. Burdian, and hopefully, we'll have some answers.
All right.
Thank you. So, are there any, since there are no items being pulled for consent, may I have a motion to approve the consent?
I'd like to, I had a question on 176B, and I do have a question on 73P.
Trustee Martin? Any other items to be pulled? Trustee Martin?
Okay, thank you. 176B is a new energy management system, and I was just trying to get the, the overview as to the basic concept of what the system was doing for us. I know it's going to save us energy, I understand that, but is this, is it like, because there's a centralized computer that's monitoring rooms and temperatures, and somebody's seen programs, or, just the high-level view would be helpful.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, I'll go ahead and start, and then, Ruben, if you want to fill in the gaps, you can do that, but we'll make this brief. Basically, 176B is about providing an energy management system that actually functions and works on this campus. This building, this campus has been constructed over decades, and there are a number of different systems that do not talk to each other, at least one or two that I'm aware of. We cannot even get parts any longer for these systems, and so, this is an effort to standardize and to get ourselves into a position of being not only more sustainable, but actually providing heat when we need heat and cool when we need cool, as Dr. Burdian has said to me in the past. So, Ruben, in a Reader's Digest version, can you add anything else to that?
Yes. 176B is actually, goes beyond just a building management system. We're actually looking at improving efficiency with all of our heating and ventilation equipment, our boilers, and any potential opportunities for renewables. So, this is soliciting a consultant to aid in that and to actually make better use of all of our Prop 39 dollars and looking at what projects we propose over the next two to three years to make best use of those Prop 39 dollars as well as the scheduled maintenance because we have a 90-year-old infrastructure.
So, is this just for the consultant that's going to help us make those assessments, or is this for actually some kind of equipment?
No, this is actually going to be for consultant to make those assessments. When we identify a project, we will actually come back and come back to the board and propose an actual project to do something.
That answers my question.
More concrete.
Yeah, and the operative language here, "by hiring an outside firm to evaluate additional energy cost savings."
Trustee Martin, you had 173?
73P, which actually dovetails on the comments from some of the members of the, of the public. I think it would be helpful to understand the process we used. I think it would be helpful to, also for me, to better understand under what, if any, conditions were, was the temporary coach who's done it the last year, what was his, you know, what was said to him a year ago when he took on this position? Was he aware that it was going to come up for renewal? A little better explanation why certain applications were or were not allowed? I'm a little confused on that. I mean, just, I realize there's a legal process we have to respect, but just on the surface, you know, a person who's been in a job for a year, and I don't know what kind of evaluation he had, and I'm sure it's not based on a win-loss record because that's not our goal here, but it seems like you would certainly, barring the legal things you're about to explain, expect that there would be an opportunity for him at least to apply.
The current coach is on a one-year temporary contract, and his contract is very clear at the end of this academic year. His contract is terminated, and there is no renewal for that.
And was that clear to him a year ago when he took on this assignment?
That was made, that was made very clear in the contract, yes.
So, he knew a year ago, this was a one-year, and there would be no way of renewing?
Yes, that's it. Because ed code also does not allow us to keep anybody longer than one year as a temporary person, and that was explained very clearly to the, to the temporary coach.
Well, and just to be clear, so, it's one thing to understand this is a temporary contract that's coming to an end, but it's another thing if he had an, had a clear understanding that he wouldn't be eligible to apply for the full-time position.
If there is a full-time position, and there is no internal candidate that is a tenured faculty member of the college requesting for a transfer, then he would be allowed to apply for the position. Once there is an internal candidate that is interested in the position, then no outsiders, according to the faculty contract that we have, no temporary person and no outsiders are allowed, are considered for that position.
So, this is part of the contract we have with the faculty association?
Yes, that's part of the contract that we have with the faculty association, which spells out clearly the process that takes place at that point.
Okay. And then, finally, was there more than one applicant, more than one internal applicant?
There was only one internal applicant, and the committee that was set up as per the contract and as per HR rules determined that they would move him forward and that he was the person that would get the position.
Okay, so, I'm going to play this back real slow because I can understand why the team would be upset. Quite frankly, it just doesn't smack right on the high level, but I'm also one that understands the contract's a contract, and we're legally obligated to abide by that contract, apparently. And so, it's just an unfortunate circumstance this time around. Okay.
President Wa, I'd like to offer a comment on consent item 73P, if I may, before we vote. I just wanted to commend all of the student athletes, the football players that came out to support their coach. As a former youth sport coach myself, having coached several thousand young kids, the highest praise that you can give to your coach is to come out and support him, and it's unfortunate that the, the contract works the way it does, but I commend you for showing that support. As a former coach myself, you couldn't ask for anything more from your athletes. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to echo, if I may, that, you know, one of the higher ambitions of team athletics is building on the concept of a team, and it's very obvious the current coach has done an exceptional job of doing that based on the fact of how you're conducting yourselves, how you've come together, and these kinds of things. And so, you know, I got to tell you, I am with you. I, I mean, I'm not going to vote against, to vote to be illegal, and maybe it's something when we negotiate contracts we ought to talk about again, but, but I do want to commend you because I think you've made a very articulate presentation that made a lot of sense to me.
So, it sounds like we are bound both by the contract legally and also by the ed code on this issue, so thank you all for your comments, and I agree, thank you very much for coming out to speak on behalf of your coach. So, at this time, I guess we should have asked for some of the votes earlier. So, we're going to take these separately. So, I would like to first ask for a motion on item 176B. Motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Any second?
One second.
So, motion made by Trustee Martin, seconded by Trustee Brown. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Take a motion on 73P.
Move approval.
Made by my, by Trustee Brown. Any second? Second by Trustee Hilsman. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. On the remainder of the consent items, may I have a motion to approve?
Move approval of all other items.
Made by Trustee Brown. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Osterling. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I do know that, that some members in the audience are asking to speak, so, and I apologize if perhaps I should have said this earlier, that we take questions on agenda items, they must be submitted to Ms. Thompson ahead of time before we hear the agenda items. After that, we listen to the speakers, and then the trustees then vote upon hearing the input from the comments. So, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we are now on item F, the annual report from KPCC. Mr. Bill Davis.
Madam Chair, Mr. President, and the rest of the board members, I submitted our report to you all early in January of 2016. It basically is an annual report of our activities for, our financial activities for fiscal 2015, which ended in June, and then, our activities, other operating activities that went all the way through December. The report is relatively straightforward, so I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have about that report, and then I can also update you on some of the things that we are up to currently. And then, I would also note, I understand that the radio committee is going to be, has been created and will be meeting soon, and I'm looking forward to that meeting. But basically here, this is my opportunity to answer questions that you all might have about the, the station, its finances, or its operations.
Yes, I had a question. I'm on the committee, and I'm looking forward very much to working with you on this. I was just, as a matter of curiosity, you mentioned the digital platforms and some of the progress you're making there, to moving out of the digital area. Could you give me a little, a little summary of that?
I'm not sure that I can give you a little summary of that. Basically, I think what we are, all of us who are working in media are seeing a transition from the traditional over-the-air broadcast platform to mobile digital platforms that are, where lots of content is consumed either on smartphones or on iPads and those kinds of mobile devices. And we're trying, I don't know if you saw, but 5G cellular service is going to be coming over the next couple of years, which basically means that you're going to have ubiquitous Wi-Fi all over the place, and that has really profound implications for us. And what I would say on our, on our strategy, we are looking both horizontally and vertically. And what I mean by that is the horizontal plane, if you might think of it as the real-time stream where we are live, and more and more content consumption, there's a lot of focus on the vertical consumption of podcasts, but the live stream that we provide is something that is incredibly important to people because you don't know when an earthquake is going to happen. You don't know when bombs are going to start falling, et cetera. So, that live stream is something that we're continuing to invest in, and then trying to get that balance right is, I think, one of our most critical concerns. Earlier this week, I spoke to our Board of Trustees, they had their quarterly meeting, and I talked about the competition that we're having for talent. There are a number of well-funded digital players who look at the talent that we have within our organization and make them offers that it's very difficult for a, you know, smaller 501(c)(3) to compete with, and in fact, we're dealing with that even today. So, from a strategy, from a strategic perspective, what I would say is, we will continue to make investments in our live stream to make that as compelling as we possibly can, and then utilize, whether that be grant funding or capital campaign funding from our board or other major donors, to make more investments in that digital depth that you would have in, in podcasts.
Great, well, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the continued partnership with Pasadena City College and cross-fertilization as we can develop it in, especially in those areas of digital technology that are, that are the future.
Thank you so much, and the one thing I would also note there is, you know, we had what I would consider to be a pretty strong year last year with internships, not so much from a numbers perspective, but from a quality perspective, a little bit more in the numbers in, in the current year. And, you know, the kids who are coming into PCC now and to all colleges are basically digitally native, and that digital nativity allows them to intuit things that, you know, non-digital, non-natives, like me, struggle with, right? So, having that kind of energy enthusiasm and creativity is something that we very much value.
Well, I wanted to mostly compliment you for the report. First and foremost, it was clear and concise, and any, this is, I know the team's working on these two words, clear and concise, but I really appreciate clear and concise, and a couple pages, and boom, and it's here. I appreciate having the financials that parallel the report, that makes sense to me. I appreciated the fact that the goals were measurable, and I also appreciated the fact that you didn't exactly make every single goal, which means that you really made good goals, because if you slam dunked every goal, what, that wasn't really a goal. So, the, the mere fact that, you know, there's better financial years and not-so-better financial years and things happen, shows me that these were really good goals and things that you're measuring. I appreciated all of that. Love the pictures. Of course, the most important thing to me is the student involved. Of course, the most important thing to me is the student involvement, and I know it was a good year for that. And I have one small request-
Sure.
-that I wish you would consider. Next year, in those incredible goals, if there was one goal that involved Pasadena City College, and in particular, maybe even students, in the goals, that would sure warm my heart.
Okay. Noted. And-
But I thought it was a great report.
Thank you. And we are in the process of doing that currently. That's something that I do with our Strategic Planning Committee, and I will certainly bring that up. And when we talk with the radio committee, we can look at one that would be an actionable goal that would have significance for the college and the station.
Excuse me. I'm not on the committee, so I won't have this opportunity to ask you in the committee, but you mentioned the profound implications. Could you just highlight a couple of those specifically? Changes that we're going through and-
Sure. Well, so, for example, I was just looking, our, so, our audience in January, all told, was roughly around 800,000 weekly listeners. And that's stretching from Santa Barbara to Orange County, from, you know, the westernmost part of Los Angeles to the Coachella Valley.
Broadcast, broadcast over the air?
So, that's, well, so, that's 800,000 of that, or 830,000 of that, almost 8%, 66,000, are streaming on their phones or digital devices. So, when I came to KPCC, our over-the-air broadcast audience was about 220,000 weekly listeners. So, and there were zero digital streamers. And so now, the growth of that digital stream is continuing, and I think, I, I'm not in the business of predicting where an inflection point's going to happen, but my guess is that that digital stream is going to continue to increase, even as we try our best to make sure that we have growth on the broadcast platform. But I think the other aspect of that digital, the digital revolution, is that it gives us the opportunity to focus on particular communities that we might not be able to do in our real-time stream. So, for example, we might be able to do podcasts in Mandarin, in Spanish, in Tagalog, that would draw on the content that we have created in English, but serve other population groups in, you know, in this area specifically, or maybe even beyond. And, you know, those kinds of flexibilities exist when you don't have the real-time pressure of a broadcast stream. So, those are just me, too, that I would, that I would draw your attention to. But right now, what's top of mind for me is, you know, talent, you know, attracting and retaining really talented producers and journalists. When you're trying to compete with amazon.com and Audible, it's really tough to match their deep pockets. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. And as I said, the last time we presented, San Marino Rotarians had said this is the best radio station they've ever heard. So, Mr. Davis has graciously agreed to come and speak to San Marino in March, and I invite my colleagues to come and hear him if they wish. No other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And again, I look forward to meeting with all of you on the committee.
Okay. At this time, we are on Item G, approval of modifications and deletions to the credit curriculum. Superintendent Verdiyan?
Right. So, we're asking the board to approve the archiving, the additions, and also some of the changes that we're making to the GE requirements for our associate degrees and for transfers.
Do you need a motion?
Are there any questions?
Would that help?
Are there any motions?
Move approval.
Moved by Trustee Martin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Osterling. Is there any discussion? May I call for advisory?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item passes unanimously. At this time, we are on information items. Item H, the accreditation update. President Verdiyan?
As you know, we have to address the nine recommendations that the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges gave us this past July. And the college has been working very closely under the leadership of Dr. Scott, Lenora Rogas, to address all nine recommendations. Today, we sent out to the college community the first draft of the way the college is addressing those recommendations. The college community at large has, through March the 18th, to submit their feedback to the committee. And what will happen after that is, Dr. Scott and Dr. Rogas will work with the nine work groups to look at the feedback that we receive from the college communities, including our very own Board of Trustees, and then the, will work towards developing the final draft of the address of those recommendations. And today, Dr. Scott and Dr. Rogas will give us a brief aperçu, if you want, of what we have done with the nine recommendations. What are the highlights of the way we are addressing those nine recommendations?
Thank you, Dr. Verdiyan. We're very pleased to be here tonight to go over the recommendations with you and where we stand at this point. I would like to introduce Lenora Rogas to you. She is the new Faculty Accreditation Coordinator, and she came in very recently and has done just a fabulous job. She's been working very long hours to make sure this was put together, and I am enormously appreciative. And I'd also like to thank Stephanie Fleming, who put together the very first, first draft, and she also put in a lot of hours and worked very hard. And like we said, this is a draft. We've already noticed several things in here we need to fix, but we'll go ahead. All right. The first recommendation having to do with integrated planning. We created, approved, and followed the integrated planning model. The campus engaged in annual program review updates, and we're happy to say that 91.6% of programs participated in that effort. The process was also evaluated, and campus, the campus community was very pleased with the training and the support they received in particular. After that, it went, the program review prioritizations and the request for resources went through the prioritization process in connection with the college's strategic plan. The deans prioritized within their areas and sought input from faculty, after which the vice presidents or executive directors prioritized the next level and in collaboration with faculty and staff. And for instructional equipment, the academic affairs area worked collaboratively with facilities and technology, as we did last year also, very successfully. The executive committee then provided further input on the prioritizations, and we engaged on February 5th in the annual budget retreat, which was well-attended by members of the Academic Senate, Classified Senate, Associated Students, Budget Committee members, Accreditation Committee members, facility staff, technology staff. And there was a very nice article in the Courier. And at this point, a tentative budget will be developed that's informed by the program review process. Budget presentations will be made to the campus beginning in spring. And after we've gone through this entire year's process, we'll evaluate and revise the integrated planning process for next year. Recommendation two had to do with evaluations and making sure that they're up to date. A master checklist was created to help us track them in a better manner. Timelines for each employee group were clarified so we know when they're all due. Managers were instructed to complete all evaluations, and they are doing so, and we are tracking them very carefully. Changes are being made to ensure that we don't have this situation again and that we're in compliance going forward. Banner is now being used to track evaluations electronically. Evaluation instruments have been verified or revised for clarity, and they will be put on the website so everybody knows what the evaluation instruments are. HR will be sending a master list twice a year to the managers, once in May and once in November, so that we're all clear. One HR staff member will handle the intake and tracking of evaluations rather than it being handled by multiple people. And as Dr. Verdiyan has made clear, managers will be held responsible for ensuring that evaluations are kept up to date. And it's also in the AP and in their own evaluation that they have to keep evaluations up to date. Recommendation three had to do with evaluations, but the insurance of SLOs in those evaluation documents. Firstly, we needed to create a consistent adjunct evaluation process, which we have done. An MOU was also written to clarify that process, which we are currently using. Full-time responsibility and adjunct responsibility is clarified in that MOU also. When adjuncts are asked to participate, they are compensated, and that has been approved. That MOU has been approved. The district has committed significant financial resources to ensuring that this process was adhered to. We are, like I said, paying adjuncts. There's an MOU in place to do that. We have paid leads this semester, so we have people, faculty across the different areas, helping other faculty to understand the process where they may not understand it well enough, and to get all the forms and documents in. SLO assessment as appropriate has been clarified in faculty, classified, and management evaluation forms, with all of them being revised appropriately. I would also like to add that 92% of our courses are now being assessed. It's a significant improvement over where we were a few months ago. We have wide participation on the part of both adjunct and full-time faculty.
Recommendation four had largely to do with concerns regarding ethics, and so the starting point was to isolate our problems. The Ethics Work Group determined that we needed to establish a cohesive ethics policy that was universal for the entire campus. We also determined that evaluation processes needed to be included into the administrative procedures, so that if there were alleged ethics violations, they could be addressed through the appropriate channels. And then finally, increased awareness on campus regarding our ethics policies, and just some general guidelines by which the campus should abide. And so one of the first things that we did was to put into creation a universal ethics statement that applies to the whole campus, and that has been vetted by various shared governance groups and approved by almost all of them. It's currently in College Council for approval. Upon reflecting on the administrative procedures, it was realized that the Board of Trustees had already modified its board policies regarding ethics and added in that evaluation component for potential violations of ethics policies. The Ethics Works Group then directed the various other constituencies on campus to do a similar sort of review. It was realized that faculty in their ethics AP already has this procedure in place, but faculty were still advised to take another look at their ethics procedures to make sure that they are up to par. Management and Classified currently have no procedure for addressing ethics violations, and so they are currently working on updating and revising their ethics APs to make sure that those procedures are in place. Recommendations were also put into place for faculty and leaders institutionally for training in ethics. The recommendation for faculty was for faculty leaders, including chairs of committees and Academic Senate members, to receive training in governance in academia, in ethics, and conflict resolution. For chairs, we hope that this training will become mandatory. For institutional leaders, including members of College Council, there was a recommendation for training regarding leadership strategies, conflict resolution. And for managers in particular, HR had requested that there be additional training for how to deal with complaints and through the appropriate HR channels. Constituency groups are also being asked to create meeting norms, so, that are specific for their group, so that there's a sort of guideline for behavior in various meetings. And that should hopefully help create more collegial environment during these meetings. Copy and conversation sessions are being established through the Governance Work Group between faculty leaders and various administrators, just so that we get to know each other on a more personal level, rather than sort of conceiving of each other as adversaries, conceiving of each other as colleagues and potentially friends. And then the Campus Climate Survey, which is actually already in its, a great draft form, now includes a very strong ethics component, so that we can use the current Campus Climate Survey that will be administered in the spring of 2016, and use that as a basis of comparison to last year's Campus Climate Survey, to see where we still need improvement and what improvements have been made. Regarding organizational structure, there was a proposed new organizational structure, and it was, again, vetted through the various shared governance bodies. Input was solicited, and changes to that academic structure proposal were made based on that input. One of the primary concerns was that there may be inadequate support for the new division structures. Within the new academic organizational structure, there will be 12 divisions, and we wanted to ensure that each of those divisions had adequate support. And so now, each division will have an administrative assistant as well as a clerk to offer that support. We have five academic dean positions that will, are being filled, as well as the Student Affairs Management positions, and then the Assistant Superintendent, Vice President of Instruction. And that's going to be filled and begin July 1st. For professional development, probably one of the most significant improvements was the creation of a centralized body on campus that can sort of coordinate all of the smaller professional development committees. This college-wide committee is not only responsible for coordinating the subcommittees, but also managing a centralized website. That way, the entire campus community has access to professional development opportunities and can register for those opportunities online, and uses potentially a tracking system to see who's completed these professional development opportunities. A needs assessment survey was just completed recently, spring of 2016, and the summary for that report, or that survey, has already been put together, and that is being used as a baseline to create further professional development opportunities later on this semester. The, as you know, the board policy and the administrative procedure 7160 were approved, and that's just a formalization of PCC's commitment to continuing with excellence in professional development opportunities and training on campus. We're continuing with training this spring. Significant improvements include training the campus community on new accreditation standards, training the campus community on SLO assessment and how to effectively implement SLO improvements in the classroom, governance and ethics, which I already mentioned. And then we're continuing on with our equity, diversity, and cultural competence theme, including a great panel that will be established this spring on open educational resources to help assist our low-income students. For the governance recommendation, we have a lot of exciting changes coming out of that work group. One of the strongest recommendations was to the various constituency groups to review their administrative procedures on governance. And coming out of Classified and Faculty Senate, or Academic Senate, was a strengthening of language that increases communication between the Board of Trustees and those constituency groups, potentially in times of conflict, but really to help explain why different decisions were being made. And hopefully, through that increased communication, the faculty and the Classified will have a better understanding of the rationale behind many of the decisions made on campus. We made a recommendation as well for increased appreciation of faculty and staff who participate in shared governance roles, and that recommendation was made to executives and managers. We also recommended annual training for College Council, as well as faculty leaders, which I also mentioned before. The shared governance committees are now creating annual goals, and required to complete annual self-evaluations, particularly the standing committees of College Council, are required now to report back to College Council annually on their progress and evaluate themselves against their own creation of goals. We wanted to increase the emphasis on shared governance and the importance of that on campus, and so shared governance is really emphasized now in job descriptions, job announcements, and job hiring interviews, to make it clear to all incoming faculty and staff that there is a shared governance responsibility on this campus. We are also encouraging division deans and managers to emphasize shared governance participation in activities more during division meetings. And then also in performance evaluations, to report shared governance participation positively in performance evaluations. Campus communication is being increased through the use of a common communication tool, so that different representatives on shared governance groups have an electronic as well as hard copy mechanism by which they can report back to their constituents about what's happening in various committees. We're also making sure that increased communication happens through the Inside PCC newsletter and the presidential forums.
Recommendation eight has to do with evaluation, and it overlaps with most of the other recommendations because all the changes that we make need to be evaluated for possible improvement. Because of the overlap, we created a leads group, so the leads of each of the recommendation groups meets every other Friday afternoon, and we talk about all the recommendations and how we're working together and make sure that we all understand what the other group is doing. The evaluation group has been involved with the- The evaluation group has been involved with the governance structures in terms of helping to evaluate policies and procedures of the constituency groups, and it's also been involved in looking at the role of the College Coordinating Council and how that can be revised to be more effective. And as Lenora said, the shared governance committees all create annual goals now and self-evaluation, and that's part of the evaluation group. And they've been supporting the other accreditation work groups, such as integrated planning. We need to be sure that we evaluate the annual update process, which we have done, and the entire integrated planning model after we go through the first year. They've also been helping with professional development in terms of the needs assessment survey. We will evaluate the website when that's up and see how well that's working for the community, the campus community, and also the various workshops and trainings we'll need to evaluate. And any others that may need assistance, such as after we've had the new organizational structure in place for a semester or a year, we will want to evaluate that also. And as Lenora said, we'll be doing the Campus Climate Survey in April, and we'll be able to compare our results to last year, which is very important for us. And perhaps mostly, this group is going to help the college community understand the importance of evaluation in terms of the accreditation standards and the need to continuously And Recommendation nine is Student Affairs. They have created a plan for program review, for annual updates, and for the SLO assessment process, and I'm pleased to say that they have 100% participation on their SLOs and their annual updates. They have created SLOs where needed and established a timeline to make it very clear that they have a plan in place. The plan will ensure that all elements of the recommendations will be met on an ongoing basis, and that was what the recommendation had asked. In terms of future actions, as Dr. Verdiyan said, the follow-up report was made available to the campus on Monday. Planning and Priorities, which also serves as the Accreditation Steering Committee, met today and went over the first part of the report and had some suggestions for improvement. We had the electronic feedback from the campus until March 18th, and then the Board of Trustees' feedback until March 18th. Then the revised report will go through the constituency group process. Later in the spring and April, we'll have another round of accreditation forums, another accreditation newsletter, and ultimately, final approval by P&amp;P Accreditation Steering Committee. Then it will go to the board for approval. It will be submitted to ACCJC in late September, and we will be visited by team members in November of 2016. And that's it.
Any questions from the trustees?
Yes?
Dr. Selig, please.
Back on slide number four. Slide number four. Right, the second bullet point, could you describe that again?
Yes, the MOU that was created made it clear that SLOs are the responsibility of full-time faculty as part of their regular job. And it also said that adjuncts, for adjuncts, it's extra work, and they will be paid if they're asked to participate in the SLO effort. We don't have to assess every single section of every course. Say, for example, we have 50 sections of English 1A. We don't have to assess every single section. We have to get a representation. And so where we need adjuncts to assess, in some cases, the course may only be taught by an adjunct, so we need that support. And in some cases--
What you're saying is we pay them extra to do that SLO? Okay.
That assessment, correct. Yes.
Okay. And on slide 10. The, right, on slide 10 here for these Student Affairs, they're going to be SLOs. Is that the way in which the various elements, and there are a whole bunch of programs here, is that how they will be measured, whether or not they're meeting some required level of performance? And if not, we figure out to change something or do something different?
Yeah, in the case of Student Affairs, what we're doing is, for the most part, getting student input on how they're doing with, perhaps filling out financial aid forms, how they feel customer service is occurring in admissions and records. So for the most part, theirs are different. They're more surveys, they can be customer satisfaction type of things.
Customer feedback?
Yes. Yes. Correct.
It could be like some kind of an administrative unit outcome. I mean, Dr. Scott mentioned that financial aid could be students waiting in line to meet with a financial aid counselor will not wait for more than 10 minutes, and then we'll see how we can improve on that.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple.
Mr. Martin? I'm happy to follow you. Well, first, tremendous kudos to everybody for a lot of hard work in putting all this together, and it's obvious, there's a lot of good things happening here. I had one concern, I kind of sent it to the superintendent in a little more detail, but I feel like I ought to, in fairness to you, let you know this is coming from me. And it's centered on Recommendation seven in the book we were given, and it's hard because there's not page numbers, but just to sum it up succinctly--
We're sorry about that.
It's okay. But one of the suggestions was have page numbers. But the second suggestion was, to sum it up succinctly, there's a sentence in here that over the last year, issues between the faculty and the Board of Trustees have remained an area in need of improvement, and then it goes on about the Academic Senate. And so I'm going to try to say what I'm about to say clear and concise, because I like people that do that, and I'm also going to try to say it extremely respectfully. But to anyone who has observed a few board meetings back a few years ago now, at the center of probably the biggest problem in accreditation that rippled through everything else, was a conflict, to use the word politely, between the former superintendent president and some academic leadership. And it is my opinion, in being one who attended all those board meetings, that that particular conflict was the center of the issue that highlights, over the last few years, there's been a conflict between the faculty and the Board of Trustees. And to not mention in some ever-so-polite way that that conflict existed, and obviously the board, in obvious ways, has rectified its part, and it's obvious that the academic institution has made a tremendous effort to rectify their part. So I think we're missing something in the gap here that needs to be said, so that we're not creating a revisionist history that was like talking about the recent-- My example is, it's like we're talking about the recent history of China, and we didn't mention anything about the conflict between Mao and Shanghai Shaq. You know, I don't mean we have to mention names, but it's also a testimony to the institution that actions were taken both ways to help bring all that to people who wanted to come together and do it. So I kind of politely ask that there be an insertion in here that explains it wasn't just the board and the faculty, there was a common cause in the middle that kind of precipitated some of that. Would ask that you consider that.
Trustee Martin, your point is well taken. We will take that feedback, and the work group will look at it and will incorporate it in the report. Thank you for that, Trustee Martin.
Other comments?
I had just a couple of quick questions, and again, I'd echo my colleague on the-- kudos to you for great work, and as someone who's new to the process, it's great to see such hard work and dedication. Just quick questions. You mentioned revisions to the ethics process in the different, the Classified management, that that was in process. Are some of these things goals that you want to accomplish before the accreditation submission, or are they things that are going to be ongoing?
Management is currently looking at revising its ethics AP, and they are in the process of taking into account the considerations of the Ethics Work Group, and we currently have a manager on the Ethics Work Group as well to sort of understand that recommendation and where it's coming from. So that is currently being done. I don't pretend to have a timeline on that, because that is something beyond the work group's control. In terms of Classified, it's a little bit more tricky. Because there are unions involved on that end, a work group is being formed within the Classified Senate that incorporates union and non-union representatives to figure out exactly what sort of procedures can be put in place, what's okay with the union, and so forth. So that might take a little bit more time, because there are more bodies involved.
Yeah, I think it's fair that there's an ongoing process. I don't need the pressure on that one. Will we get some kind of summary of campus comments on the report, we at the board?
Yeah, we'll make those comments public. I'd also like to say that prior to the team getting here, we are allowed to send an addendum. So whatever doesn't go into the report, because we will continue to do work on all these areas after the report is going through the governance approval cycle, and then we will be able to put any further documents into the addendum, so they'll see that.
Okay, and the last quick question is, I didn't, I wasn't able to really highlight any change specifically in board policies that we need to make that will be presented to us. Are there recommendations that you're going to give to us in terms of board policy changes?
I believe that is handled through our Board Policy Committee, and so we do that on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you.
So let me say my part before you-- So anyhow, so I really would like to commend Dr. Scott and Lenora, I can't remember your last name, for this excellent job that you guys have done just getting this document together. I was part of two groups of many groups, so I can truly say that I understand the amount of work and time and the challenge of working together with all of these different groups across the college. One of our problems we've always had was working together. Well, this document, to me, it represents that we're finally doing that. And I am very, very grateful that I was part of that group, and we had a lot of discussions about ethics, shared governance, very hot topic. But the good thing is that everyone was able to work, get together, and this is a testament, it's a testament that when we work together, we can get things done. Good job.
Thank you, and we appreciate your participation on those two groups. It was very helpful.
Mr. Osterling? I wanted to echo the comments of all the other trustees on the work product, and it does demonstrate that we are working together. And for a first draft, I think it's exceptional. I do have some suggestions, and the first suggestion I would make would be for each one of the recommendations, that if we could start off with a summary first, and then go into the narrative. And the summary probably is quite similar to the slides that you've already put together, and that would help me, as a reader of this document, hopefully the Accreditation Commission as well. And then the second recommendation that I would make is, some of these recommendations are quantitative in nature. For example, recommendation number five, we're being asked to fill permanent positions. And the proof's in the pudding, either we filled those or we haven't. I think we could create a very simple table that shows at the time the accreditation report was issued, these were the positions that were not filled, and we filled them or were in the process of filling them, and that would very simply demonstrate that we're doing that. And also of that same nature, recommendation number two, the evaluations. Either we're catching up and getting those evaluations done or we're not, and that's a relatively quantitative thing that we could illustrate with a table. Thank you again for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other comments from trustees? I also want to echo my colleagues. I think that this was an excellent report, and all the comments that I saw back from the trustees, certainly very complimentary of all the hard work that's been done. Couple of things, I think, that you mentioned. One was on the ethics, and you said that the management group didn't have their own ethics. And when the board did our ethics policy, I think one of the comments made was, we hope that this would become sort of a base, a standard, universal across the campus. So how are different groups, will they have very different ethics policies, or how will that be managed?
The recommendation that we're currently putting forward, and it's already been accepted by Classified, it's in the process of being reviewed by management, and will come onto the agenda hopefully in the future for Academic Senate for faculty, is that we're going to request that the ethics procedures be divided into three parts. The first part being the adoption of the universal ethics, the summary statement, that's already been approved through these various constituents groups. The second part would be specific to that particular constituent group. There might be something that arises among faculty, for example, that isn't necessarily a concern among faculty, I'm sorry, among Classified. So some of it does need to differ, just based on the nature of the interactions among the people in that group. Then the third part would be the procedure for dealing with alleged violations. So they will be similar to the extent that they all contain ideally those three parts. The first part being the same for everybody ideally. Again, we still need to make sure that Academic Senate would approve of that, and we're hoping that they will do so. And then the second part, specific policies to that group, and then the third part, the procedures for dealing with violations. Those by nature will have to differ. For example, a violation among management might be substantially different from a violation that occurs from one faculty member to another. Ideally, we would like to be able to see these groups sort of take care of their own house, so to speak, but if that proves to be too much of a barrier to overcome, the Ethics Work Group is exploring the possibility, and again, we're just exploring it at this point, of an ethics oversight committee that would be for the entire campus, to have a more standardized process by which alleged violations are dealt with. So that is a sort of thing that we can default to if it proves necessary, but we would like to give the various groups an opportunity to deal with this matter on their own in the way that best fits their constituency.
And then also-- Go ahead, Dr. Scott. I just did want to say, though, the group did look at the board's ethics policy, and they understood the work that had gone into it, and the looking at the models and the CCLC, and they didn't use it as a model when they started their discussions.
Thank you. Dr. Selig, you had another question?
Right, we've got a signature page for everybody here on the-- Okay, you're smiling. We hope we got everybody's signature. It says October 2016. Now that's when the team's going to come back. Is that going to be the same team?
About three or four people that are part of the team.
Okay. Now, about when do you think it's going to be ready for a signature? You mentioned something a little while ago about addendums or something like that, but when would the version less any, what you call addendums, be finalized? What's the schedule for that?
The report itself will come to the board for final approval towards the end of August or early September. And at that time, once the board approves it, we will have all the signatures.
The other people will, the others will sign it before us?
What do you mean, the others?
Yes.
Right. Back to the--
And then once we send it to ACCJC, between that time and the time the team gets here, if there are changes, significant changes that have happened, significant improvements, we will create an addendum at that point to add the additional work that we have done, and when the team gets here, they will get to review that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So one other comment, well, two other comments. So one is, there was a lot of evidence quoted throughout the report, and so my question was, you know, where, I assume this is going to be a digital package, and we would find those would be links then to those evidences? So one was, you know, as Trustee Osterling said, you know, we have quantitative kinds of things that we could really measure and see how many evaluations were actually done. So is that how you propose to--
For evaluations in particular, we're just waiting for that chart to be created. The HR staff has a lot on his hands right now in terms of all the faculty and new hires, and so we're just sort of waiting for those charts to be able to be generated. But in terms of the other evidence that's actually quoted in the evidence lists at the end of each section, that evidence does exist, and it will be posted on the PCC website in zip files, so it'll be available to the public to download--
This week?
Yes, this week.
Okay, great. Okay, great. And when the board had its retreat, we had Yuba, the Yuba chancellor, come over and their trustee. And one of the things they talked about in specific on the evaluations was that they did some sort of equality control, so they made sure not everybody was getting fives, and then had to find out that we had to terminate people for non-performance. So do we have some sort of equality control that we're planning on doing on some things?
Okay, I'm not totally sure I understand the question.
So for example, specifically on evaluations, and this is the one that Yuba would talk to us about, and it was just an example of how they manage their process. So they wanted to make sure that they didn't receive a report that all the evaluations were done and everybody got five, so the highest rank, and then find out that now we're going to be terminating X number of people for non-performance.
No, that's not happening. The managers are reviewing the evaluations. I'm reading many, many, many evaluations, and if there's a needs improvement situation, we're saying that. We're doing all evaluations in a very good faith and honest manner.
Yeah, so no rubber stamping, good.
No.
I think that's what I was asking.
No.
Okay, and then the other thing I want to say besides just a great job was I was really pleased at some of the programs that you called out in the accreditation, and things that were very, very high on the list, in the chancellor's list, and across the college system to be reviewed, and of course workforce is one of them, near and dear to my heart, but also the OER and the zero textbook, zero cost textbooks, I think, you know, great, so I'm glad you called those out. But very nice job, and I know, I speak for my colleagues in saying you guys really have done a phenomenal job on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Waugh, would you indulge me for?
Certainly, Dr. Miller.
I appreciate that. You know, when this whole thing started, it was really about climate and the issues. And one of the things that Kathy Johnson, who was the team chair, said to us on the way out, is if we could all just get along, work together, and let go of the past, we'd be a much better institution. And I think what we have here is the actual living embodiment of what she said. And under the leadership of Dr. Verdi, and Dr. Foster, Dr. Kiotis, Deborah Cantoraro, classified, and Mr. Futterner with the Management Association, collective bargaining, and certainly, there's ample, ample evidence that this institution has turned around. So I want to personally thank Dr. Verdi for his leadership, which I think has really set the tone for that. And more importantly, I want to thank the board for helping to create the climate that makes it safe for everyone to come out of their foxholes and to truly participate, because as you can see, we have an amazing faculty, staff, and management team at this institution. And if that visiting team showed up here tomorrow, we'd be ready, which is months ahead of when we have to be ready, and that's a true testament. And I just wanted to say that, so thank you for indulging me.
Thank you very much, Dr. Miller. It certainly shows, it does take a village to raise the child, so thank you all for all of the work that you've done, and we know that we're going to have a very good report, we're in good hands. Okay, so now we are on to I, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Waugh. We had a wonderful visit to Washington DC earlier this month as part of the annual conference of the Association of Community College trustees and the American Association of Community Colleges. President Waugh, trustees Hilsman and Osterling, as well as student trustee Ban, and our very own Alex Buckelheid, represented our college in meetings with NASA, the National Endowment for the Arts, and the Small Business Administration, and the Small Business Development Corporation. Visits were also made to Congresswoman Judy Chu, Congressman Adam Schiff, and Senator Diane Feinstein. Those meetings were very fruitful, and we obtained a lot of very important information that we have shared with many of our faculty members, our staff at the college, and we will be pursuing the various leads that we have had regarding grants. At the national level, there's much conversation about President Obama's focus on college promise programs, and we were pleased to be able to share our own foundations initiative in this area. Other discussions centered on financial aid, Pell Grants, and other programs, as well as Perkins CTE Grants. Last week, I had the pleasure of addressing the La Cañada-Flintridge City Council, sharing with them the message that I have been taking across our district to various city councils. And that message is that PCC is open for business and is ready to work with our community partners as well as our high school districts. I'd like to thank trustee Salvage, Dr. Bell, and Ms. Darmika Alexander for being present at La Cañada-Flintridge City Council. Last Saturday, PCC played an important part at the Black History Month celebrations, and we were present at the Northwest Pasadena Parade. Our outreach staff, our Ujima students participated in that parade, and just down the street from our very recently opened facility at Muir High School. Again, the message that we are sending is that PCC is present, and PCC is here to help our communities prepare our students for the future. Two of our students have been selected by the Pasadena Sister Cities Committee to serve in the 2016 German Summer Exchange Program. The two students are Jenny Chang and Menor Varochoa. They will be traveling to Ludwigshafen in Germany on a six-week internship this summer. I'd like to congratulate our students, congratulate the Foreign Language Department and their teachers for preparing them and making all this possible for our students and our college. I also want to highlight the leadership that Dr. Brock Klein, as well as Dr. Sheila Rose, are providing through our Pathways Program as it relates to the basic skills work across the state. We are truly a leader when it comes to this program. The results speak for themselves, and for those of you who have read the governor's budget, you will notice that we figure prominently in the top five schools in the state in the movement of students from basic skills to college-level courses. In a few weeks, our English professor Dustin Hanvey will be traveling to Washington DC with a group of his students to tour the capital and visit with representatives of our government. They have read the book Freedom Writer's Diary, and they have been inspired by its message of the power of education. I'm grateful that Professor Hanvey has been able to bring together this group of students, and they have done an enormous fundraising, and now they are going to go to Washington, and they will be at the White House this year. They have received an invitation to visit the White House. This Sunday, Ms. Crystal Colros and myself will be going to the College of the Siskiyou's, where I am chairing the accreditation visit for the Siskiyou's Community College District. And it is important that faculty members, managers, staff, and trustees take part in those peer visits. And I know that Dr. Scott was on a team last semester. Dr. Paul Jarrell will be on a team visiting Los Angeles Community College Districts in two weeks, I believe, right? Stephanie Fleming was on another team, and several of our faculty members are on visiting teams. And in about three weeks, the CEOs of all the community colleges of California will be meeting not far from Fresno to go over the accreditation process in California. A whole day meeting will be devoted to the future of accreditation in California, and the CEOs of the 113 colleges and the districts will study the process as it is and will be making their final recommendations to the Board of Governors and the Chancellor's Office. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Verdi. So at this time, we will go to announcements by shared governance representatives. So President Morales.
Hi, everyone, good evening. First of all, I do want to apologize for not being here on our first meeting of the year, which I was very sad to not be here, but I do want to welcome our new two board members to our board, and also our new elected board members. I'm really happy to see all of you guys here. So something that I do want to mention, I'm super excited to say, is that our student body board was able to be attending at the Rosemead Campus today for a meeting. So we did host a meeting today there at the Rosemead Campus. It was a fantastic campus. It was my first time there. I was like a little kid in a museum because it was beautiful. For those who have not gone to the Rosemead Campus, I really, really hope you guys can attend that beautiful campus. And it's not another campus, it's our Rosemead Campus, so that's fantastic. We also had a tour by our director, Raquel Torres Retana. She was a fantastic person. She treated us like we were at home, which we were at home, just in another side of our campus. Also, I do admire Dr. Retana, I see her helping our students, I was very happy to see that. We were, you know, if we had a little break, she'll go downstairs and help our students, and I was so shocked and admire her a lot for that. So hopefully, we could have another meeting very soon at our other campus, and hopefully we invite more of our students so they can know that we're also there for them. Something that I do want to mention for Lenora and Dr. Scott, they have been doing a great job for accreditation. I and some of my board members have been going to some of these meetings. We've been trying to stretch as much as possible, making sure that our student voices are being heard, and also helping our accreditation. And as we can see, everybody that goes to those meetings have done a fantastic job, and hopefully we could get this through. Our hiring committees are coming up, making sure that student representatives are going to be there. Also, mid relaxation week is coming up soon, next week, so I do invite you guys to come and welcome you guys. Psychology Services and DSPNS are working together with our student body. Something that I do want to throw out there is that our student body has approved a recommendation to increase our health fee. Hopefully, that will be coming up soon, and I'll be working very hard to make sure that our students know why we have made that decision, which will help not only some, but all our students here at Pasadena City College. And that's all for my reports. Again, welcome, everyone, and I'm very happy to see all of you guys here. Thank you.
Thank you, President Morales. So from classified senate, Ms. Mitchell?
No report today.
Thank you. From management, Mr. Futterner?
I don't have a report per se, but I do want to respond to the question that trustee Hilsman brought up earlier about the recommendation number ethics four. From our side, I can tell you that that work will be completed very, very soon. It's all but done. I just wanted to rest assured.
Thank you, Mr. Futterner. From academic senate, Dr. Foster?
Good evening, trustees. I don't have anything terribly significant to report. We're doing our business. We have a senate equity retreat coming up that we've coordinated with Dr. Cynthia Olivo. It's my hope that this retreat will help our senators to learn about the demographics of our students, and it preempt the equity issues on this campus. I would like our senators to take leadership roles in their areas to lead faculty in a cycle of inquiry, to learn about the students, and things that we can do to help our equity issues, so I'm really excited about that. I do want to thank Bob for making the comment about the collegiality issues on this campus. If someone didn't say it, I was going to, but it's absolutely due to the leadership that we have right now, both in the union, and the senate, and at the administration level. So I think that that is a significant thing, and I'm happy to see that we're all moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. So at this time, are there any reports from our trustees? So trustee Osterling?
I attended the legislative summit in Washington, which Dr. Verdi has already reported on at length, so I won't repeat that. It was a great experience to sit in the meetings firsthand, and there were a number of promising opportunities that I encourage us to follow up on. And in particular, we're fortunate to have JPL right in our backyard here, and I'm looking forward to the internship opportunities that Nassau and JPL offers, and hope that we can get our students into those.
Thank you, and we'll certainly follow up on some of that with a legislative committee meeting. Trustee Martin?
Nothing to report.
Trustee Salvage?
Yes, three brief things. We were very well received at the Locken Yata City Council meeting. They were very impressed with the information that Dr. Verdi conveyed to them about what PCC means to that community, and I can tell you, it's interesting, when I was campaigning two years ago, when I phoned into that district calling voters, I had to explain to a lot of them, you guys get to vote on how PCC's run, because you're in the district. And it was excellent that Dr. Verdi made that presentation. If, Mr. Futterner will help me with the pronunciation of the artist's name.
Calza.
Right, okay, thank you. We've got an exhibit of photography over there in the Boone Family Gallery, and it's a great exhibit on water photography. And there's going to be an event at noon on Friday, okay? So you can break away from whatever you're doing on Friday at noon, we'll have an event there.
Yeah, if I may, that is the presentation by the Artisan Residents of a work to Pasadena City College. That's part of the deal, and that has been going on for nearly 30 years, so we've established quite a collection.
In addition to the photography, there's also a brochure with an essay on water, which is very informative, so it's a real topical thing these days. And finally, my phone is not working right now, so I don't know how we're doing over here at the gym, but we've got a basketball game going on right now. Does anybody know? This is the first round of the playoffs, women's basketball.
Well, perhaps someone can look up that score and then call it out from reports. Yes, trustee Vaughn, do you have a report?
Yes. As mentioned, two weeks ago, I attended the National Legislative Summit in Washington DC along with the Associated Students VP for Student Services, Julia Russo. While speaking with our representatives in Congress, I was pleasantly surprised about how supportive they were of community college issues. Among some of the things discussed were grants, counseling services, and veterans' issues, which are continually being improved upon. Today, I accompanied the Associated Students as we held the executive board meeting at the Rosemead Campus. Dr. Torres Retana gave us a wonderful tour of the facilities, and we discussed ways in which we could collaborate in the future. A topic of discussion was the way Rosemead classes are listed when registering. Sometimes students are unaware that their class is held at the Rosemead Campus when scheduling, and do not take into account the amount of time it takes to get to the Rosemead site. Some students even go to the Rosemead Campus looking for the R building. So one of the discussions we had with Dr. Retana was having a shuttle to the Rosemead Campus. Perhaps a shuttle from the Sierra Madre Station to Rosemead is something PCC can have in the future to include access for students taking public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Vaughn. Trustee Brown?
No report.
Trustee Hilsman?
Well, I just wanted to say, after my two or three months of service on the board, I wanted to thank so much Dr. Verdi and Dr. Miller, and all the administrative staff and faculty, as well as my colleagues on the board who've been so supportive of me, and my colleague, Mr. Jim Osterling. I also wanted to say that we had very productive meetings in Sacramento on the state level, and in Washington, as has been mentioned. One of the things that we probably don't realize as well as we might on this campus is the importance of community college on a national level. It's something that is going to be a topic of conversation, particularly this year during the presidential election. And you can see on the national level, on the state level, all the enthusiasm and interest there is in developing the opportunities that are presented by community college for a great number of students. So I would just echo, having been here for only a couple of months, how impressed I am by all the things that you're doing for the students, and how important this is, not just for Pasadena or even California, but for our whole nation. So I commend all of you for the great work, and I thank you for helping me initiate on the board. Thanks.
So I want to call to all the trustees' attention in your Brown folder, or in your inserts, there are a couple of things. One was a master calendar of reports that we can expect that would be scheduled for future board meetings, and we are going to be updating that with reports that are requested, as well as critical timelines. as well as critical timelines, such as President's evaluation, the Board's evaluation, self-evaluation, so. So it's a work in progress, so I hope you all give input to that, because we want to make this work for everyone. The second thing, it's in the Brown folder, is I put together an activities note, so I don't go on and on about all the things that I wanted to talk to everyone about, and that way you have information. But I got the idea from the League, and I was talking to several of the trustees regarding their accreditation. They said, you know, we just put down some bullet points, and we shoot it to the Board Secretary and ask them to put it together, and what it does then is it documents the Board's activities in the community, which then helps us in accreditation because it shows we're doing what we're supposed to do. So I hope this is helpful to you. So the things I just want to call out is thank the community events, or just thank the college for coming out to support the South Pasadena Mayor's Prayer of Breakfast, which is the first ever, and it was to raise funds for their emergency services. And then also, we had a Lee's Family Peace Plaza dedication, and that was attended by trustee Selvage, Brown, and Hilsman, and really a wonderful event, and if you ever have a chance to go by the Sculpture Garden and see that dedication, the Lee's family was a very interesting family and gave a contribution to PCC. But more than that, they were very, very involved in the health of the community and the health of the college. I want to call your attention to several upcoming events, which is the IAPI Emposium, and then Dr. Russell Frank is working on the International Leadership Foundation, which scholarships several of our students in leadership. And then the Laxa Events, and I won't go over those because I've gone over them several times, but I know trustee Osterling will be attending the upcoming one on the voting rights, and then we'll have Workforce on 4/25. I did want to let you know that I was requested by Vice Chancellor Tina to represent the trustees on the IAPI, the Institutional Effectiveness Program Policy and Procedures Roundtable. So I look forward to getting any input from any of my colleagues. And also, on the legislative update, so I think that sufficient information has been given out about that. I have listed the actual link on Workforce, on Doing What Matters, so I invite the trustees to go to that link. It lists all of the recommendations, as well as the next steps. And then all of those, it will also have a primer on how to use the Launch Board 2.0, which will then report out any of the data that we're getting from the colleges who have launched that. As can be expected, the two big topics at the League meeting were the Workforce, but also the ACCJC and the accreditation. And what was said to the trustees is there is an April timeline plan, which will be going before the Board of Governors. That timeline is to, the plan is to detail out when the community colleges will be moving over to a new accreditor and how they will be moving over. And Vice, and Chancellor Harris spoke very passionately about this particular issue, and also asked all the trustees to please support their superintendents, chancellors, and presidents in supporting this effort. The most, I think, compelling reason, I didn't realize this until I went to Sacramento, is that we are the only region that is actually, our accreditation team only accredits two-year colleges. All other regions accredit both two-year and four-year colleges. And so you may have seen the letter where our ACCJC is now put on probation and also was denied the ability to accredit a four-year higher, a four-year degree institution. And so as, the thought is, as community colleges move closer towards the higher ed institutions, we move towards the baccalaureate degrees, that we really need an accreditation, an accreditor who will understand and articulate to four-year colleges. So I'm sure Dr. Verdi will have more information, and we'll be keeping tabs on that, but that is the news from the trustees, and so I urge all of you to be familiar with the issues. One of the things that came up that trustee Ban and I attended in DC was a meeting with Senator Boxer, so it was about the chancellor's office, as well as three other community colleges. And Senator Boxer spoke very passionately about her, one of her initiatives, and that is to ask for a 24-by-7 rape counselor on every campus, and so she's willing to go out and to advocate for that. So I think this works in conjunction with the California legislative bill under Cork, so the Cork Bill, and it's on a watch right now, but we'll discuss that more in legislative. And the other things that came up, both with the congressional representatives that we met with, Representative Chu and Schiff, were the requests for information on how we were doing moving the VA clinic, medical clinic, forward. So I know I've gotten a lot of requests for information from the communities, and I'm sure other trustees have received the same thing. So what I've asked, and I've asked Dr. Verdi to, the process will be that I will call a subcommittee, the Veterans Subcommittee, which was initiated by Dr. Fellow two years ago, and we will review the issues, and then it will go before the entire Board for a full vote. But I've asked Dr. Verdi to make sure that administration has all of the information ready to present to the Board, because it does not serve us well if the Board tries to make recommendations without full information. So I've asked Dr. Verdi if he wanted to add any more to that.
The information we have received from our legal counsel is that under California law, community colleges cannot enter into revocable licenses with federal agencies. And of course, we can enter into that if we want to, but then we will be exposing ourselves to litigation. That's the main issue that we have currently. There are two other possibilities, known as the Joint Powers Authority and also the Joint Use Agreement, and these two are two possibilities that the federal agencies cannot really consider with a community college.
So Dr. Verdi, I think, is working very closely with Congresswoman Chu's staff, they're working with the VA, and they're looking at what are other pathways, and I believe other city officials have also entered into assisting. We have over, almost 1,000 PCC student veterans, and so that was the genesis of us looking at a way to assist them, and so we are very hopeful that we can still continue to provide something that will assist them. So I just wanted to give everyone sort of a little update on that upcoming meeting, which probably would have come under Future Agenda Items. And then just very, very quickly, I wanted to congratulate AS and the students who came with us to Sacramento and Dean Cobb, because of your efforts. You know, Assemblymember Holden has now authored Assembly Bill 2222 for the student pass, so good job. So we're looking forward to that. And then we have scheduled coffees with the Board and Kreveling, and so I have opened those to all Board members to attend, so these will be open meetings. On March 17th, we will be meeting with Classified, and then on March 24th, we will be meeting with Faculty. And then we have a future meeting that will not be an open meeting with Academic Senate. Okay, and that's my announcements. And then we have future Board meetings, so we do have a continued change from, I guess it was a domino effect, from rescheduling some of our meetings. So we will not meet the first Wednesday of March, but we will meet on March 16th. And then we will, the next two meetings in April will be joint meetings, one with the Associated Students and then with Pasadena Unified. So if AS wants any input from the Board, please let me know, and we'll get that. And I know trustee Brown has been getting, collecting information and will be working with Pasadena Unified. So are there any requests for Future Agenda Items? At this time, the Board is now adjourned.